Hey Joni, it's CB. I'm on the phone today.
Hello? CB, I think you just dropped out.
I'm on the phone today. Sorry that I'm not on Zoom.
Oh, okay. That's all right. Thanks for joining us.
Just refresh my memory, Joni. Is there supposed to be like a link to a sign in sheet? Or do you just want us to say our name in the chat?
I did already. Yes, thanks for the, bring it up. I did already put the link to the sign in sheet in the chat.
Okay, we can't, we can't see that if it was there before we joined. At least people like me who are guests probably can't see it.
Let me, I'm gonna put it in there again. Yeah, just.
Thank you.
There, I just put it in there again.
Thanks, now I see it.
Okay. Excellent. Um, well, I think we have. Let's see, we have got quite a few folks here already. Um, and it is 12:04. Daryl, you ready to get us off and running?
Oh, hang, hang on. I couldn't see. I was trying to sign in. Am I here?
Oh, I don't know. Um, I see you, but.
Ah, okay, I'm, I'm back. It opened another version of Teams when I was trying to sign in. We'll call the meeting to order, the special meeting of the BPAC on Wednesday, March 23rd. We'll start with our public involvement announcement, which is on the agenda. And could we get a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Lindsay. I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
This is CB. I have a second.
Any opposition to approving the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the agenda is approved. With that, we have one action item, which is BPAC comments on the MTP draft performance measures and project prioritization criteria. And Joni, would you like to lead us in that?
Um, I, I basically, from the last BPAC meeting, I don't remember who it was, but someone asked for a work session, a special meeting to submit comments on the, the draft, MTP draft performance measures and project prioritization criteria. So I had sent out a link with the information to, which contained a video of Aaron presenting on all of these performance measures and project prioritization criteria. So, and I had asked all the BPAC members to take a look at that and some, think about their comments, if they had any. So the purpose of this meeting today is to, if you have comments on those, and we would like to submit them formally as a BPAC committee. This is the meeting where we can formally do that. So hopefully everyone's thought of comments and has them ready to discuss with the committee. And then we can do that, and then the committee can submit those, and we can vote on those today to be submitted formally to Aaron. He is online. He's just available for any clarifications or last minute questions. But hopefully you all have had the information you need and we can move on with submitting some comments, so.
Okay, so could the committee members, if you, if you have a comment to make regarding this action item, or you have comments to submit, please raise your hand. Our CB shout out since you're not, since you're on your phone. So if you have any comments regarding the action item, or comments to submit, raise your hand and we'll go in order. All right, Lindsay.
Okay, hey, everyone. So I thought we were going to do a little bit more and walk through some of these items, because I think I more have questions for discussion, especially looking at the draft performance measures. There are a few additions for, for different pieces of data, especially when it comes to injuries or fatalities for bicycle and pedestrians. So I was just hoping that folks who are working on this, maybe Aaron, if you're here, or Joni, if you could share just how that plays into some of the performance measures, especially for improving safety and security, and then improving mobility options. It seems like those two kind of have a heavy amount of pedestrian and bicyclists data, but just wanted to have the conversation and discussion. I don't have any specific additions or comments to bring to the group, but wanted to hear about how this, in particular, these criteria impacts and take into account bicyclists and pedestrians.
I don't, I can't talk specifically about, I mean, we could go through them, but I mean, I don't, I don't, I can't speak specifically to that. Aaron might be able to, but.
Yes, I'm confused on what the question is.
What? Go ahead.
I don't understand the question, sorry.
Sure, I wanted to see if you could just discuss how these criteria just take into account bicyclists and pedestrians, just on the big picture. There's a lot of different performance criteria that are kind of drilling down to fatalities or injuries. And so just wanted to see if you could talk big picture about how these criteria consider bicyclists and pedestrians.
It's, it's mattered throughout the criteria. If you read through the criteria, you can see the places where we talk about bicycle pedestrian safety. So we have a whole category under MTP goal two that's talking about improved safety, collision locations, and then gets bonus points if it improves bicycle pedestrian or non-motorized or transit user safety. Then we have improved security as well for non-motorized users. Again, I'm, I guess I'm not really understanding what you're asking for, because it's kind of laid out in the criteria where we account for non-motorized users.
I guess where I'm coming from, it's, it's just really technical. And it, and so I'm just wanting to have that bigger picture discussion about how this is considered.
It's considered throughout in various locations, improves bicycle and pedestrian network. Well, not there, sorry. It's really under the MTP goal to improve safety and security. The criteria kind of show you there. If you're talking about the performance measures, which is a different section of this, we do have a whole section under goal two that is accounting for it. So I can share my screen real quick if you want, or if Joni wants to pull up.
I can do it. Yeah, here, let me get, I'll just do it. Um, oh, sorry. No, that's not it. Do, 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 draft performance measure, that's what we want. Okay, how about that? So here is what's on the website.
Yeah.
And we can go through these.
If you scroll to goal two, it shows, so we have the two A. Those are the federally required ones. So you can see in there, we have a very small amount for non-motorized users, because the fed ones are more focused on the vehicular users. So if you go under two C, we actually tried to account for the non-motorized users a little more by looking at, or what do we, what data do we have available, and it tends to be conflicts between the different modes. So vehicular and non-motorized users. So we add in, we added in two C. Those are our performance measures that are relating to that kind of aspect. So we account for them there, because that falls under the safety goal. In terms of other ways that it helps, any of the other improvements that we have that are focused on the non-motorized users can help with safety as well. And then the criteria for goal two helps with it, so. I'm, sorry, I'm still at a loss as to what.
I'm not trying to ask a trick question or anything. This is, this is all of masking. It's just, yeah, just getting that bigger picture, laying the foundation. So thank you.
Hey, this is CB. I've got a couple of comments, and I'm kind of a broken record. On goal three, I think all of the suggestions are good. I am a public transportation user, biker and walker. I do not own a vehicle. This is my vision. So with that said, my biggest frustration with all of this is it all sounds wonderful, but when it's not maintained, why even bother? And I know it's different budgets, but how can we get those two horns closer to get, thorns closer together? Why, why make all these great changes and improvements if we can't maintain them? And I know, again, it's not what we're here to talk about, but I would like more information, maybe on the side, on how to bring those two entities together so they are funded.
Um, this is Joni. I'm just gonna answer briefly. Aaron, feel free to jump in if you want. But I do agree with you, CB, absolutely. That is a huge frustration for all of us, and I'm, I'm sure for you as you're trying to navigate, and it's ridiculous in the winter time. We are trying to get maintenance. I know that, and especially through all these criteria, and the MTP team has taken a hard look at incorporating maintenance into the planning and how we can do that better. A lot of it comes down to funding and just allocating funding for it. And so we are trying to do that. It's a process, but it really just comes down to, you know, figuring it out. And then we, especially in the tip, the tip criteria and the tip nominations, I know that maintenance was a criteria in all of those project categories. And so even if people couldn't say, you know, who was going to be responsible for maintaining a facility, they still had to try and make a guess. And so did we as we're scoring projects. And so, um, I know, I know it's still frustrating.
So as a, sorry, sorry to interrupt. So, so I understand the frustration. I understand the difference. I'm right there with everybody else. You may or may not know who, I'm also on the Public Transit Advisory Board, and we've got this maintenance snow removal subcommittee that we're trying to get this coalition of a huge voice that we can then go to the assembly. And right now, that's the, the brightest idea that I think we, or the best opportunity we have to try to get a louder voice on maintenance. But yeah, if there's anything that anybody wants to send me or email me on who to contact, it's something I'm willing to charge forward with. That, I digress. I think overall the, the goals are very good. I think the, I think there's a lot of additions, and I don't read any of them as being inappropriate. That's my comment.
Great. Um, I don't know, Aaron, can we talk at all about the AMAT's funding of maintenance vehicles? Or is that too?
Not really part of this discussion. What we need to focus on today is if people have comments or questions or corrections or other things, please submit those. So then we, as the MTP group, can talk about it. This is a perfect thing to submit a comment or question on, because it is something that we need to talk about. So having concerns about how maintenance is going to be taken care of for new facilities is the epitome of questions that we need from groups or the public. So please submit this. I recommend that you submit this as a question or comment from the group.
Okay, and what's the, what's the way to do that? I'm sorry that I don't know.
So today, uh, if you want to, we're hoping that members would have comments ready to submit to the group for approval. But what we could do is, if you could at least type up your comments, maybe in the chat box, and then, and formally, we could just have those comments in the chat box, and then the committee could approve them. The, the point is to submit formal comments, we need a vote. The committee has to vote on it. It has to be voted on in the meeting. So if you don't have your comment ready, maybe if you could type it up in the chat for people to see, and then at least they could look at it, and then we could have a vote on, a vote on the comments. Or if somebody wants to type up their comment in, in an email and send it out to the group for review, as we're sitting here, we can do that as well. But.
I guess then I'll just beat a dead horse. My comment is, I, I think these improvements are good. My concern is how will they be funded for maintenance? And I can, I can, since I'm on the phone, I can't chat box it, but I can.
Right. I could, you want me to put, put that in the chat for you?
Yeah, that's, that's basically it. I, I think, I, I like the goals and the additions, but I'm concerned on how we can maintain additional, since we can't already maintain. And I don't, and winter is the biggest part for me, but summer matters too. There's a lot of ADA in compliance or uncom, sidewalks that are non-compliant, and that's added onto this list, and that was great to see.
Okay. So I'm typing up, goals and initiatives are good, but how is maintenance going to be incorporated? Does that sound okay?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. So those are in our chat box now. Thank you, CB. Any other members would like to make comments or, or have any other formal comments to BPAC would like to submit for these? On these goals? No?
I have one more question, CB. How does the rail, additional rail fit in? I don't, I didn't see that as quite fitting in. Is, because it's a non-motorized, but it's still motorized? How does, how does the railway fit into the?
Um, that is, I don't, that is a good question. I'm not sure the, I don't know the answer to that.
So goal one B, increased transportation infrastructure resiliency to natural hazards. Miles to program new public roads and rail located between high density areas. I, that, that one just jumped out at me. It's odd, but I don't think it needs to be removed. I just didn't understand it.
So, natural hazards. Okay, well, I'm, I'm assuming that that is relating to the movement of goods and, and goods and services and, and maybe people here. But so resiliency for hazards, so our railroad, our port is, most goods in Alaska come through our port and get onto our rail system to be shipped elsewhere. So I'm assuming that is addressing resiliency for that rail to move goods and services, but is that correct, Aaron?
Yeah, that is correct. We have to account for railroad, or rail in our process, so. But it's, I mean, if that's a question, please submit it.
Okay, here, let me type it in. Uh, CB, so your question is, how does the, so goal one B?
I think it's one B. How does one B, how does the rail, how does, I mean, I, I agree with increasing transportation infrastructure from natural disasters. I just don't understand how the railroad is a part of this. It's, to me, it's not, well, I guess it's public transportation, but not really. So, I, I don't have a great question there, Joni. I'm reaching, but I just don't understand the railroad being part of it.
That's, that's all right. That's a fine question. How does the railroad integrate into this goal?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Excellent. Thank you. Um, all righty. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, this is Lindsay. I have, looking at the goals and that draft criteria there. My question is on that goal three around mobility options. And I guess my comment first is around improving ADA accessibility. I, I think this is just one of the most important kind of improvements that need to happen, and it just gets four to five points. And so without trying to rework how all of the points are allocated, I would just say that I think ADA accessibility should probably warrant more points than just four to five overall. And then when we, when there's language about improving the bicycle and pedestrian network, is the pedestrian network specifically about the pipe, like corridors that are identified in the non-motorized plan? Or is that just overall, that there would be pedestrian infrastructure improvements?
Sorry, I, I was typing your question out. So this, sorry, the first one, you, from goal three, your comment is, do you think the ADA accessibility should warrant more points?
Yes.
And then, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
When we refer to the pedestrian network and projects that close gaps in the pedestrian network, is that just referring to the prioritized corridors within the non-motorized plan? Or is that pedestrian infrastructure overall?
I, that is, as far as I know, referring to pedestrian networks overall, not singling out the high priority ones that we've identified in the non-motorized plan.
Okay.
And if that's wrong, Aaron can correct me, but I'm pretty sure that's inclusive of all our pedestrian networks. Do you want me to type that up as a question or something that needs to be clarified?
Yeah, because I guess I, I would just support that it's more overall about improving pedestrian infrastructure, since the network is so narrow, and, or the priority network in the non-motorized plan is so narrow for the primary or secondary corridors. And I wouldn't want a project not to receive these points if they're not within that identified network.
Okay, sure. All facilities. Sorry, not just, oops. Hi, how about this? Um, this is still goal three, right? Can we state that improvements to pedestrian networks is inclusive of all facilities, not just the high priority head networks from the non-motorized plan? Is that all right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, sure, sure. Okay, submitting that. Okay, great. And then Emily submitted a, she submitted a comment, says, building on CB's comment, goal one is maintain existing infrastructure, but none of the performance measures deal with non-motorized facilities. Can one or more performance measures be added to one A, specifically referring to the percentage of non-motorized facilities or miles with pavement in good versus poor condition? And perhaps another to measure the effectiveness of winter maintenance, e.g. average time after snowfall to clear all, or 80% or something of the non-motorized. Great, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't fast enough to, to think and formulate my thoughts when we were on that topic. But yeah, I was just kind of thinking about how do we incorporate that concern about maintenance as something that can be measurable and fit it into this document? So it was a thought.
Okay, great. No, it sounds good. Um, any other comments as we're looking over these? Scroll down here to the last two, nope, sorry, last three goals. Support the economy, promote a healthy environment, and advance equity. So you guys are probably all reading those. Looks like, okay, so we got one, two, three, four, five comments so far.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Are you there? Are you there?
Oh.
Are you there?
What was that? Don't know. Okay.
That was my phone ringing.
Would you control your phone, Daryl? Come on. We are in a meeting. Just kidding. I'm just kidding. Um, how about, is everyone feeling good? Feeling like we want to move forward on these five comments?
The CB, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay, excellent. Um.
I guess just one more overall comment I have is that I think these are pretty parallel to a lot of the tip criteria. And I don't know, the more that those, that these processes kind of interrelate, the easier it is for the public. Because like I said, these are difficult to navigate, and a lot of community members always want different projects in their areas improved. So just the more that this can parallel the tip criteria, I think it does quite a bit, but I, you know, haven't fully vetted that out. It just like, the better.
Okay, um, so I would say overall, these goals should parallel, spell that right? No. No. Okay, the, the, parallel the tip criteria for cohesiveness? Okay. Um, all right. Great. And I can tell you that a lot of staff time, Aaron's group that he put together, including us, AMAT staff, and all the consultants spent a lot of time and hours going over these and trying to make sure that they were hitting all of the, all the right notes and being inclusive of all the non-motorized users and facilities in our planning goals, so. I feel pretty confident that they have done a great job here, but we appreciate your comments and thank you for reviewing these. Are there any other comments from the committee? Should we vote on these six? Six comments to submit formally? What do you think, Daryl?
Rather than voting separately, is there any opposition to voting on the six? Rather than voting separately, is there any opposition to voting on the six comments collectively?
Not for me.
With that, could I have a motion to submit the six comments that have been proposed by the committee?
This is Emily, I'll move.
Can we have a second?
Lindsay, I'll second.
Any discussion? Any opposition to approving the motion? Seeing and hearing none, the motion to submit these six comments is approved.
Great.
Great, thank you.
We will submit these to Aaron and his project team, and we appreciate everyone's time today. Thank you so much for taking a look at these. And everyone, enjoy the rest of your day. Oh, sorry, let me just peek at the agenda really quick. We did actually have an opportunity.
I'll get comments.
Committee comments, or public comment.
Well, any committee comments? Any public comments?
Are you there? Are you there?
That counts.
Of course, the phone always rings when I, I'll turn the ringer down.
Are you there?
With that, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Are you there? Are you there?
Yeah, this is Lindsay, I'll motion to adjourn.
Can we get a second?
This is Emily, I'll second, and congratulate your phone on its good timing.
Thank you. I finally turned the ringer down, I figured out how to do it. Any opposition to adjourn?
No.
With that, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Joni, Aaron.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Enjoy your day.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being.